Thank you. Thank you. All right, I call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 8, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. to all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals are hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals is going to be held today, Wednesday, May 8. First, we'll start with an introduction of board members. Herb Bodenseek is absent. Paul Pennard.
Present.
Mark Hanson's absent. Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson's absent. Laurie Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Owls.
Present.
And Jacob Dewey. All right. Notice that this meeting is recorded. It's being recorded and broadcast in the town of Barnstable's government access channel in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and to please make their presence known. Seeing none, I will notify the public that the technology of our screens is not currently working, and so any exhibits will not be displayed on the screens tonight, but we do have tablets available here, and all the items are available on LaserFiche on the town of Barnstable's website. There's links to each application. First order of business, we've got minutes from March 13, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
Try the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so those minutes are approved. Our first order is old business appeal number 2023-039. Daniel and Karen Baird have filed an appeal of administrative official decision in accordance with 240-125B, 1A, and MGL Chapter 48, Section 8. Petitioners seek to overturn the notice of violation in order to cease, desist, and abate from the building commissioner dated September 11, 2023. Summary violations determined by the building commissioner include Barnstable zoning ordinance Chapter 240, Section 14A1, RF residential district, and Chapter 240, Section 10C prohibited uses, specifically the use of a trailer/camper as a substitute dwelling unit or for temporary sleeping purposes on a property without a permitted principal dwelling. The subject property is located at 27 Falcon Road, West Barnstable, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 196 as parcel 032. It's located in the residence F, RF zoning district. This was continued from December 6, 2023, January 24, 2024, and February 28, 2024. I don't believe any members were assigned. Attorney Wall.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I represent the--
Exhale.
Uh, microphone. There's that little button there. Try it again. Maybe a little closer. It doesn't seem to be working.
Lights on?
He said the green light's on.
I think it's better now for all side.
It just got brighter.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney, and I represent the petitioner this evening, and I have a very short sentence that might resolve this, and if that's not satisfactory, I have a very brief explanation. But the short sentence is that this matter has been resolved with the building department, and we're here tonight to withdraw the appeal. If you'd like a further explanation, I could give you a two-minute explanation.
I make a motion to accept the withdrawal.
All right, without prejudice?
Prejudice.
I need a second.
Second poll.
All right. Vote to accept the withdrawal of appeal number 2023-039, without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
All right. Moving along, appeal number 2024-013. This is new business. Cape Cod Hospital has petition for a variance pursuant to Section 240-64 signs in downtown hospital district. Petitioner proposes three identification/wayfinding signs on the new four-story Barbie Pavilion under construction at the Cape Cod Hospital. Proposed signs exceed the maximum sign quantity, sign area, height above ground, and are proposed to be illuminated with an LED sign light strip. The subject property is located at 27 Park Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 342 as parcels 001 and 039. It's located in the downtown hospital DH zoning district. So sitting on this will be all members present. Attorney Cox.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish here this evening on behalf of the hospital. Joining me to my left, all the way to the left, is Michael Boxstein, who is the Vice President of Facilities for Cape Cod Healthcare. And then just to my left is Greg Serunian, who is a consulting architect for the hospital and a principal at MedCom Architecture. As was indicated in the hearing notice, we are here this evening seeking relief in the form of a variance to allow for three new, very important wayfinding signs that would be located at Cape Cod Hospital on the Barbie Pavilion, which is the large four-story addition that's currently under construction at the hospital just down the street. We did submit with our application materials a pretty lengthy addendum describing the relief, which hopefully you've had a chance to review. I'm going to go through that a bit tonight, but certainly if you have any questions, feel free to either interrupt us, or you can ask at the end. First, just by way of background, I'm sure everyone here is very familiar with Cape Cod Hospital. It is right down the street from where we are this evening. As you may or may not know, Cape Cod Hospital has one of the busiest emergency departments in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all year long, and the busiest emergency department in the Commonwealth in the summer months. The hospital provides inpatient, outpatient, and emergency care for hundreds of thousands of patients, including residents of Barnstable County, national visitors, and international visitors. The main portion of the hospital property is bounded by public roads on all sides and consists of about 17 acres, and then there's land that the hospital owns surrounding what I'm calling the main portion of the property. In addition, the town line between Barnstable and Yarmouth runs right through the middle of the hospital. The hospital building is very large. It consists of hundreds of thousands of square feet of hospital space and has numerous public entrances. In 2022, the hospital sought and received land use permits for the Barbie Pavilion, which is, as I mentioned, currently under construction on the southwest side of the hospital. This addition is a transformative project for Cape Cod Hospital, redefining cancer care that's provided at the hospital and clinical care. The pavilion consists of over four stories and over 137,000 square feet of space. The first two floors, so the first floor and second floor of the pavilion, will house the new Davenport-Mugar Cancer Center. On the first floor, will offer advanced radiation oncology treatment, and on the second floor of the pavilion, there are 36 private infusion bays as well as medical oncology exam rooms. The third and fourth floors of the hospital each contain 32 beds that are used for cardiac care, interventional care, surgical, and medical procedures. As part of the project with the Barbie Pavilion, there were numerous site improvements, including access improvements, upgraded infrastructure improvements, new landscaping, new parking, and new stormwater improvements. And overall, this addition represents a tremendous investment into Cape Cod healthcare. As you can imagine, for a project of this scale, a lot of time and planning was put to evaluate every aspect of the design and sighting, including the design and the placements of the signs that were here before you tonight seeking relief. In terms of permitting, the hospital is located in the downtown hospital district, which was created in 2022 as part of the downtown Hyannis Form Base Code. The four-story pavilion has received numerous land use permits, including development of regional impact approval by the Cape Cod Commission, site plan review by the Town of Barnstable, and Conservation Commission Order of Conditions from the Town of Barnstable. No zoning relief was needed for the addition or any of the site improvements, all of which meet the requirements of the ordinance. So we're here, without his background, we're here tonight seeking your approval for three signs that are proposed on the addition. And if you look on your LaserFiche to the link that says signage 3, it shows the three elevations where signs are proposed. So the first one that comes up is the-- Which elevation is that? That's the west elevation. Okay. So this is the west elevation that comes up first. This elevation faces South Street and is an important route leading to Cape Cod Hospital, just driving down the road.
This is the one that says it's the file signage and is the first page? Is that?
Correct. Yes. Yep. This sign serves as a beacon to one of the major vehicular entrances into Cape Cod Hospital. The proposed sign, as you see, identifies Cape Cod Hospital and this addition, the Barbie Pavilion. The sign is proposed at 120 square feet and represents just 1% of that facade. The center of the sign is proposed at a height of about 49 feet above the ground so that it is visible as you come down South Street to identify the hospital, and at a height that is visually aesthetic in terms of this large four-story building that's under construction. The next sign, next page-- Shows the south elevation, so this would be sort of facing the water, if you will. This elevation faces hospital parking areas and provides the primary entrance into the new Davenport-Mugar Cancer Center. This sign, which is located right by the entrance to that new space, consists of about 40.5 square feet. The center of the sign is proposed at about seven feet above the ground, and again, it will be located right by the entrance into that new space, providing important wayfinding for patients and guests coming to the new cancer center. Finally, the last page shows the north elevation. So this is like the main, if you're coming down South Street, you turn left onto Lewis Bay. It's sort of the main facade of Cape Cod Hospital from Lewis Bay. This elevation sort of bookends the arrival experience to Cape Cod Hospital on the left would be the emergency department in the middle would be the sort of main entrance to the hospital, and then on the right will be the main entrance into the Barbie Pavilion. This sign is proposed by that new entrance into the Barbie Pavilion. It consists of 69.5 square feet, and the center of that sign is proposed at about seven feet above the ground. In terms of lighting, all of the signs are proposed to be similarly illuminated with downlit LED lighting. There is a rotatable light that's cantilevered off the side of the building, from the outside of the building, and points down towards the sign and the building. The wattage of the lighting is about 6.5 watts per foot. We did talk with the architect who designed this building and the lighting, and they have advised it's not going to be enough to illuminate the signs, which need to be illuminated but won't have a measurable impact in terms of being too bright or impacting the photometric plan that's already been approved by the town and the Cape Cod Commission. Collectively, these signs are necessary to provide clear wayfinding and direct guests and visitors to the appropriate entrances at the hospital. When a patient comes to the hospital for a meeting or a procedure, they are given directions to a particular entrance to come in, and these signs are important to direct people to those entrances. In addition, given the size of the hospital and the large number of public entrances and the services that are provided, the signs must be of sufficient size to be clearly visible and provide that directional wayfinding. Moreover, patients and visitors often coming to the hospital may be feeling unwell or stressed or nervous about a medical treatment or the condition of a loved one, and they don't want to be meandering around this large property and building. Again, all the more reason why important, clear wayfinding is critically important. Furthermore, as a matter of public safety, it is also very important that public entrances to the hospital be clearly marked with appropriate signage, particularly, as is the case here, when those entrances are near an emergency department. And in fact, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health recognizes that hospitals are extremely unique, necessitating clear wayfinding signs, and so the DPH has adopted mandatory signage requirements for hospitals. I've cited it in the addendum that we submitted, but 105 CMR 130127A3 requires that, and I quote, "exterior hospital entry points shall be clearly identified from all major exterior routes, including roadways, public transportation stops, and vehicular parking." It is also equally important that the non-emergency department entrances into the hospital be clearly marked so that there is no confusion if someone does come to the hospital in an emergency situation, whether that door leads to the emergency department or not. And again, the DPH has very strict requirements regarding that signage. In terms of the zoning ordinance, there's really, I think, no way to sort of sugarcoat this. The signage allowances in the zoning ordinance for the DH district are, in my view, completely inadequate and unsafe. While we believe that the zoning ordinance may be preempted by state regulations, DPH regulations mandating signage for hospitals, after discussion with the building commissioner, who I think is very supportive of this request, they did ask that we bring these applications to the board with their support, seeking the relief tonight. So the zoning ordinance in the DH allows, and I quote, "one sign, giving the name of the occupant." That one sign in the zoning ordinance is limited to no more than 12 square feet. That one sign can't be more than eight feet in height, and the illumination standards for that one sign refer back to the residential district requirements. I think, given what we're talking about, a hospital and public safety, that is completely inadequate, and so that's why we're here seeking the variance relief for these three signs. In terms of the criteria, I submit it meets the three prongs. The first prong is that you have highly unique circumstances. Here, this is a highly unique property. It is very large. It is irregularly shaped, has multiple frontages, multiple public roadways that surround this property. It also is developed with a highly unique and large structure, all of which are criteria prongs under the first prong for variances. The second prong is that a literal enforcement of the signage provisions represents a substantial hardship. Again, we suggest that that is met. It would be unsafe, frankly, to have just one sign on this entire property and inconsistent with state mandates requiring adequate signage for hospitals. Finally, the third prong, that there's no substantial detriment or derogation. Again, we suggest the signs are appropriately sized and located at the entrances and along the major route leading towards the hospital as required by DPH. They provide clear wayfinding. There's only one sign per facade. On the west elevation, again, this provides wayfinding into the main hospital vehicular entrance, and on the north and south elevations, the signs are located right by the main entrances into this new building. In terms of the lighting, the hospital is open 24 hours a day, every single day of the year, and so the signs have to be adequately illuminated. Here, they are tastefully downlit. They're not internally illuminated. They're externally illuminated with downlighting to provide clear visibility but not be overly bright or distracting. And so to the extent that this is not already preempted by state regulations, we are seeking relief in the form of the variance for these three signs, and our team is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. I guess that brings it back to the board for questions for the applicant. Does anyone have any specific questions? Go ahead, Paul.
No.
Oh, no, no. Paul, go ahead. Go ahead, Paul.
I'm sensitive to--
Turn your microphone.
I'm sensitive to 24063H. I realize that that's residential, but there's one statement in there with respect to intrusion of lighting on residential. I know that there are, I presume there are residential condominiums and stuff right near there. The brightness of the proposed signs, how does that compare to the brightness required in the residential districts? That may be an unfair question. I don't know.
In terms of 24063 versus 24064?
Yeah. I mean, they said they're downlit and stuff like that. I'm just wondering, are they substantially brighter than signs in a residential district? Or?
Do you want to respond, Greg?
If the green light's on, it should--
Again, Greg Serunian, for the record, MedCom Architecture Group. So we, you know, we do have a light study for the entire site. That was a requirement for the Cape Cod Commission. That includes other lighting, such as parking lot lights that are in poles and bollards, and we are well underneath the criteria from the Cape Cod Commission. When we looked at the lighting, because this was asked of us, we did go back to the architect who performed that study, and they were also the ones that picked the lighting. And, you know, their statement was, you know, there will be no significant increase, you know, to the ground lighting, again, because these are faced back at the building. It's not necessarily down, so the neighbors won't be looking at the actual light. I think there was a cut sheet as part of the submittal package. You can see that the light's facing the building. You know, too bright a sign light actually makes it difficult to read, believe it or not. So I believe, I can't answer your question in terms of, you know, what the actual technical aspect of the zoning code says, but I believe based upon what we've been told and the information we've been given and read, this should not have any impact.
Thank you.
Manny?
Just a question on the preemption point. Do the DPH regs provide specificity in terms of size and dimensions?
No, it doesn't do that. It just requires them at all of the entrances, public entrances, and major routes.
Thank you.
I just, I don't think we, again, as the discussion earlier, I don't think we have the power to grant a variance here. I really don't. I mean, the zoning district is the hospital. I don't think, I don't think we are the place to come for, to give you relief.
Respectfully disagree. So within the zoning ordinance and the zoning act is ability for the board, this board, to grant variances. It is both in our zoning ordinance and in the state zoning act. And I think, if I may, I think that there was a lot of focus when the Form Base Code zoning came through in terms of sort of the meat of the Form Base Code. And what happened was that provision, the signage provision is in a separate section. It's in the signage part of the zoning ordinance and not sort of the bulk of the Form Base Code provision of the ordinance. And previously, the zoning district that included the hospital included all of the little medical offices that surrounded the hospital plus the hospital. When the Form Base Code came into effect, the map was changed so that it was only the hospital. And I think what happened is there was a lot of back and forth regarding sort of, you know, the height and the bulk and the dimensional requirements of the buildings, but in terms of the signage, I think there was not much focus, at least from the hospital's perspective. And we were very involved with sort of the bulk of the Form Base Code. And so what happened when, while I think that signage may have been appropriate when you look at sort of all of the little properties that surround the hospital, the doctors' offices and the like, when the zoning map changed and it only became the hospital, the signage provision, the only change to the signage provision was changing the name of the zoning district. And so I think there wasn't enough, respectfully, focus and thought in terms of the signage as it relates to the hospital itself. So I, you know, I respectfully disagree with you. I think you absolutely do have the authority to grant variances.
I mean, again, like you just said, though, that pushes it back to town council that that needs to be updated. 24064 is totally inadequate, and that is above our pay grade. You know, that's--
I totally agree that it needs to be updated, but I, again, respectfully disagree. You do have the authority to grant variances.
I agree with you. I agree we have the authority to grant variances generally, but how do you meet the first prong? You're the only, how is this different from other properties in the zoning district?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. It's, I think it is a highly unique property.
It's the only one.
It's the only one. It's not unique from anything. It's the only one.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, respectfully, I think-- You know, it is a very unique property. I--
I mean, I'm not disagreeing. The sign should go up. It's just this is not the path. This is not--
It makes all the sense in the world.
Frankly, this is our--
It makes total sense. It's just we're not the path to get it done.
Well, absent, you know, absent a zoning change, you are the, you're the only path to get this done. And--
We've had a lot of training and discussion regarding that, and I, you know, there's just, I can't, I can't push it forward. If you guys think you can, I'm just one vote, but--
This has to be--
It has to go to council. And are you in the regulatory agreement zone? Is that the GIZ or no?
It is in the GIZ, yes.
So it could be a regulatory agreement to the council, too.
I suppose we could go that route, although I understand the council is looking at whether now with the new zoning place, they want to continue to pursue regulatory agreements in downtown.
I mean, it says, I don't know what discussion we're in here, but all the signs have to comply with 24063.
Only from the lighting perspective.
Yeah, that's right.
24064 is the signs in downtown--
That's right. Okay, okay. We don't know that these do or don't.
Well, it says one sign, given the name of the occupant, or other identification of a permitted use may be permitted.
Right.
Such signs may be no more than 12 square feet.
Yep.
Which is totally inadequate for a hospital.
Of course.
But again, that's not our, we're not changing--
But I'm just saying, we would be rewriting the whole code here.
The town council needs to.
Right.
Well, I mean, in essence, that's what a variance is. Ordinarily, what we're doing is we're asking the applicant--
For one parcel.
For one. But the problem here is the standards. The first standard says that this, the application of this, let me read it, "it is unique, soil conditions, shape, or topography, and especially affecting this land, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located."
Like the example of the giant rock in the middle of one lot and not in the 20 other lots.
It's the only one. There's no other, there's nothing to compare it to.
This changes the whole zoning issue for that entire district.
Exactly.
And I don't think we can do that.
I don't think so. I can't, I don't get past that first standard, and if the request is a variance, I don't see how we can say that there's unique circumstances affecting the hospital but not anything else in the district when the hospital is the district. I mean, there's a logical problem there.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, I did discuss this with the building, not this particular question, but it was the building department that urged us to file for a variance with you when we submitted the applications. We had meetings, submitted a letter to the building department. They seemed very supportive of the signs and suggested that we file for a variance from--
And I'm totally supportive of the signs. I just don't think this is the path to do it, and maybe the DPH regulations is the way to do it. I don't know. But I think the fastest would be a very simple regulatory agreement with the council, or make a request to modify these amendments. We probably need to open for public comment--
Yeah.
--before we-- I don't know. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Unless somebody else has questions.
We'll come back to discussion.
Yeah, we can discuss in a second.
Is anyone from the public here to speak to this? Did we receive anything? I don't think so. All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the hearing's closed. Back to the board for discussion. I think we kind of discussed. Attorney Cox, do you want us to make findings?
No, I think if, in light of this, why don't I ask for a withdrawal without prejudice? I will bring this back through the planning department and have a discussion about amending or pursuing a regulatory agreement.
All right, so I'll make a motion to withdraw appeal number 2024-013 without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it is withdrawn. Thank you, Attorney Cox. All right, moving on. Appeal number 2024-014. Michael and Maria Sarver have applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-91H3 to develop lot protection. The applicants propose to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling in its place together with related site and landscape improvements. The subject property is located at 120 Harbor Bluffs Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, shown on Assessor's Map 325 as parcel 102. It's located in the residence B, RF zoning district. So sitting on this will be all members present. Attorney Creedon, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dan Creedon. I'm an attorney with an office in Hyannis. I'm here on behalf of Mike and Maria Sarver. They have applied to the board for a special permit under 24091H3 to demolish their existing house located at 120 Harbor Bluffs Road in Hyannis and to reconstruct a new house on that lot. By way of background, the Sarvers own the property by way of a deed recorded November of 2022. That was a deed from Ms. Maria Sarver's sister to Mike and Maria. They bought it from her sister. The property has been in the family since 1996. The Sarvers live in Pennsylvania. Mr. Sarver, Mike Sarver is scheduled to retire in August. It is their intention at that time to sell their house in Pennsylvania and relocate as a permanent year-round residence here in Hyannis and Barnstable once the house, if approved by this board, is constructed. This is an application under two forty H three because the lot is non-conforming as to size and it's under 10,000 square feet, which requires a special permit. Two forty ninety-three A and B speak to bulk requirements. I'd suggest to the board that we meet those as to setback, complies with set, required setback. Certainly meet it as to use under H one A, single-family in a single-family zone. B speaks to different requirements, optionality for different, compliance with different requirements for lot coverage, floor area ratio and building height. I'd suggest to the board that we meet all of those requirements as, as demonstrated on the plan submitted with the application. And then lastly, well, D, there is D, section D, but that speaks to merged lots, which doesn't apply to this application. Section C requires that the proposed new dwelling not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. We have three letters of support from neighbors in the area at 104 Harbor Bluffs, 125 Harbor Bluffs, 104 Harbor Bluffs, the O'Mallies wrote a letter of support, 125 Harbor Bluffs, the Evanses submitted a, a letter of support, and then the Langs at 10 Island View also submitted a letter of support. We haven't heard of any opposition from any of the neighbors. Everyone that my client has spoken to in the neighborhood is in, is in support of the proposal. Other benefits that would be conferred by the redevelopment here, the occupiable space in the house would be lifted up out of the floodplain, which is required for new construction. There is an isolated wetland to the rear of the property that the impact on that would be mitigated by removing the shed in that area and adding mitigation to the northwest corner immediately adjacent to that isolated wetland. It's been to Concom. It's, the property's on Town Sewer. It's been approved by Concom. Profile of the neighborhood will be improved by replacing dated housing stock from the 1950s with a very tastefully designed new house. They worked with Mike Devlin as an architect, and they're working with Dan Ogillette Down Cape Engineering for the engineering. And I'd suggest also that it meets the general requirements for the grant of a special permit, falls within a category specifically accepted for a grant of special permit, fulfills the spirit and intent, relief can be granted without substantial detriment to public good or the neighborhood affected. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. It says that by special permit, you can, the proposed demolition rebuilding cannot, and rebuilding cannot satisfy the established criteria that the zoning board appeals may allow the demolition and rebuilding, provided that the board finds that B, all the criteria in subsection H one B, one, two and three are met. The property size setback, however, decreases from 26 feet to 24.1. And that doesn't meet the criteria of B, I don't think.
Well, under H three A, Mr. Bernard, it states that if the proposed new dwelling does not comply with subsection H one A. H one A states, the proposed new structure conforms to all use and setback requirements of the zoning district. In this case, even though the existing structure is at 26 and the proposed is at 24, it otherwise complies with the side yard setback of 10. So I think that under A, it complies. B, under, okay. It speaks to floor area coverage and lot coverage and height.
Well, I have the same question. No, the, the language in three A says, the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building. And on the side setback, you're going from 24 to 26.
I'm just going to read verbatim.
It increases from 26 to 24.
Right. Currently 26 in Europe. It will only be 24. That, in other words, the proposed setback encroaches further than the existing.
Yeah. You only have to not encroach further if you don't otherwise comply with the underlying setback requirements. That's in H three A, because H three A states, if the proposed new dwelling does not comply with subsection H one A. Now you have to stop right there and say, okay, that's a condition. That's a conditional requirement. Because if it doesn't comply with that, then you go on to the then clause, which is, then the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building. But if you read the first part of A, it says, if the proposed new dwelling does not comply with H one A above, this proposal does. Because when you pull H one A and you go back and you refer to it, H one A specifically states, and I'm going to recite.
You're saying that the 24 feet complies with the requirement.
With the 10 feet side yard setback.
And all the setbacks do.
And that's what the ordinance says.
And all, all the setbacks do, correct?
I started looking at the staff report when it came out, and I, I started looking at it and saying, geez, I'm concerned about this because I went from 26 to 24.1 and then, and because I thought it said, if you don't comply with H one, then I went back and I said, oh, no, it says H one A. And H one A specifically says, if you comply with the use for the district and the existing setbacks for the district. In this zone, it's only 20 foot for front and 10 yard for side and rear.
So all setbacks will be in compliance with existing zoning?
And with the wording of the ordinance, yes.
The last sentence of that proposed finding number four.
Twenty feet front, 10 side and rear. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? What year was it that the existing house built? Fifty-one? Okay. I guess we need to open for public comment. Looks like there's no one here to speak to this. Do we, I don't think we received any letters on this one.
Mr. Chair, just the three letters that were already mentioned.
Let's see, where are they? I don't have them in my laser fish. If you can read them in, I'd mind.
I can read them to the record if you'd prefer.
Yeah, go for it.
All right, hold on one second.
Oh, here they are.
Public comment. So, three letters in support. First one is dated the 26th of April, 2024. It was sent by Douglas and Elizabeth Evans from 125 Harbor Bluffs Road in Hyannis, Mass. Oh two six oh one. Dear Board of Appeals members, we are writing in support of the raise and rebuild of the home located at 120 Harbor Bluffs Road, Hyannis, Mass. Oh two six oh one. The property before you, for a decision, is directly across the street from our home. The new construction will be quite beneficial to the neighborhood because it will be built to the current standards for homes in close proximity to the conservation land. Additionally, the house that currently sits on the land is in need of repair. The new home will be more aesthetically pleasing and more in line with homes in the area. We see no detrimental effects to the neighborhood with the construction of the new home. We respectfully request that you grant the appeal for the rebuild at 120 Harbor Bluffs Road. Thank you for the consideration. Again, dated April 26, 2024. Second letter comes in support from Samuel and Elaine Lang, dated April 24, 2024. Dear sir or madam, this is Samuel and Elaine Lang. We live at 10 Island View Road, Hyannis, Mass. Oh two six oh one, right next to the Sarvers. We were the previous owners of this property and has been in our family since 1996. We have reviewed the Sarvers' plans to demolish and reconstruct a new residence at their property and support their request for the special permit to do so according to the plans submitted of their application. Sincerely. And the last letter in support comes from a O'Malley, dated April 3rd, I'm sorry, April 30th, 2024, Rosemary and Mark O'Malley, dear Board of Appeals. We are ready to offer overwhelmingly support for our neighbor Maria Sharver, who owns the property 120 Harbor Bluffs Road in Hyannis. We are located right next to the property and fully endorse the renovations that she is planning. This renovation will continue to enhance the neighborhood. And again, they're located at 104 Harbor Bluffs Road, Hyannis, Mass. Those are our three letters of support for public comment.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment, close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the hearing's closed. Back to the board for discussion or findings. Does anyone have any discussion or something to make findings? This is a much easier special permit rather than a variance if anyone wants to take a stab at it. Go for it, Manny.
All right, this is on special permit, application number 2024 dash zero one four, Sarver. The Michael and Maria Sarver have applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash nine one H three. The applicants propose to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling in its place together with related site and landscaping improvements. Subject property is located at 120 Harbor Bluffs Road, Hyannis, Mass. Subject lot is 8,640 square feet, developed with a single-family dwelling of 1,453 square feet of living area, constructed in 1951. The lot has a frontage on Harbor Bluffs Road and Lookout Lane in Hyannis. For special permits, the board is required to make a general findings pursuant to section two forty one twenty-five C. The board, upon review of all evidence presented, after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate and if and how the evidence contributes to each of the required findings. The first required finding is that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. As we've discussed, section two forty ninety-one H three allows for the complete demolition and rebuilding of a residence on a non-conforming lot. That's what's being proposed here. Second finding, site plan review is not required for single-family residential dwellings. The third is, and, and again, based on the evidence we've heard, that the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. The proposed rebuild will fully comply with all setback requirements in the district. It, it fully complies with the requirements of section two forty dash ninety-one H three. And I find that it would not represent a detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. If anything, I think, as counsel pointed out, it will be a new building, replacing a much older structure. So those are my findings.
Thank you, Manny. So Manny's proposed findings to approve the special permit, number 2024 dash zero one four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote to approve the special permit with the findings. All those, or sorry, roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Manny, and your conditions?
The conditions and the staff report dated April 23, 2024 are numbered one through six. Counsel, have you had a chance to look at those or are those acceptable?
I have with my client as well, and they're acceptable.
Those will be my conditions.
All right, vote on the findings as proposed by Manny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose none. All right, so Attorney Creedon, you guys are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
All right, our last item tonight, appeal number 2024 dash zero one five. Swapness Singh has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty forty-seven two C for accessory dwelling units, ADUs. The applicant proposes to use the existing 1,300 square foot accessory structure attached by a roof to the principal dwelling and formerly an exercise room as an ADU, which exceeds the allowable size by 400 square feet. There is no new development proposed. The subject property is located at 144 Meadow Lane, West Marshall, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 133 as parcel zero two six. It's located in the residence F R F zoning district. Sitting on this will be all members present. I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. Please correct me.
That was correct.
Just introduce yourself with your name and address for the record and if you can tell us about your project.
Right, so I'm Swapna. We recently bought 144 Meadow Lane, West Barnstable, and we just wanted to legalize the existing ADU. In what I have proposed in the drawings is the existing structure, which is, I think, on the third page, which has the, you know, it is a 1,300 square feet already existing structure. And I believe that 900 is required for, you know, for the ADU. So I wanted to just get a variance for that 400 square feet because it is already existing.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for you. I, I didn't go and visit the site. I don't know if you happen to have any photos of the structure, but is this, is everything on one floor or it's going to be, it's two floors there?
It's all on one floor. So there are four garages. There is a part, like what you see in the, in the, in the floor plan, you see that the kitchen and the bathroom is on, and, and the living room is on top of two garages, and then there is another bedroom and exercise room, which is on top of the other two garages.
Okay.
So all this is about 1,300 square feet.
Okay.
And it is already existing. We bought the house and this was existing, and we are just trying to legalize this.
Okay. Is there?
So there is no, we're not constructing anything.
Do you know if you have, if there's septic capacity?
So the septic, there, there, there was a cesspool. We are working on the septic. We are working with a septic installation and a engineer. They've met, we, the soil test is already done, and the engineer is working on the septic design.
Okay, so they'll make the septic compliance for the added, is it going to be one or two bedrooms?
It's going to be two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, okay.
Yeah.
Have you talked to the building commissioner at all about building code stuff that you have to?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
So for that, if you look at the second drawing, I think we need a couple of fire-rated doors, so we are working on that with the building inspector.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? I mean, we seem to, we seem to get these, we seem to have several of these, but I think these are the ones that are a little bit more agreeable because it's an existing structure. They're working with an existing space. If they're building it ground up, it would be, okay, it should be 900 square feet, but they're using existing space, but.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Is your mic on?
Question, Mr. Chairman. This is, there's no building required, so they don't, I assume they don't need a building, a construction permit?
She has to have a building permit to get it approved from the building department.
Okay.
It sounds like it exists. There's, there's already a kitchen there and stuff, kind of, it's kind of already there. So she's trying to bring it into compliance. So the building inspector is going to come out and check.
Okay, will that include also a septic?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, we are working with the building inspector on this as well.
Okay, that's.
It sounds like they may either end up expanding or building another septic or something.
I don't know if we condition this or, or somebody else will cover it in order for them to use it. It's not conditioned here.
I mean, I think the only thing, we're, we're not giving, giving her a permit to build this. We're just giving the building commissioner the ability to permit it at 1,300 square feet. That's sort of all we're releasing here. Anyone else have any questions or thoughts? I guess need to open for public comment. I don't think we received anything on this. Did we? Is there anyone here to speak to this? Not looking like it. All right, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the public hearing's closed. Back to the board for discussion. And again, these are all like slippery slopes and I don't like them, but, and I, I don't really know what our best path forward is to try to sort of, you know, push this back maybe to the council to say, hey, we're getting a lot of these and like, should they be up to 1,400 square feet? I guess the only other question there, because it's not in here, what's the size of the house?
So.
Square feet of the house?
It is, according to public records, it's 2,400, 2,369, which includes the first floor and the second floor. There is also a basement, which we are working with the inspector and getting the permit There is also a basement, which we are working with the inspector and getting the permit for it. So, so the size is about 3,600, 3,700 square feet.
I'm sorry, a permit for what?
Use of the basement?
Finish the basement.
Yeah, I mean, it is already finished. Again, the finish, the basement is, the lower level is already finished, too.
Because that's gonna get them to the.
But we are getting it permitted.
That would get them to the square footage, because it can only be 50%.
Right.
It is a 1.65-acre lot.
Yep, I see the plot line.
I mean, it's just real quick, this is exactly what we had last week, where, two weeks ago, where we were here with the pre-existing structure on West Barnstable, again, that, that was originally commercial, converted to residential, and then looking for an ADU permit, I believe. It was, it was almost identical, and again, it's a pre-existing structure, not started from scratch, so.
Was that the one with the garage, the store? No, no, that's the pool.
There was, it might have been a two-story, I can't quite remember, and he was talking about maybe sort of annexing off a piece of it, but I mean, it was really not really feasible in reality, so, anyway, regardless, it just, it seemed.
It was the framework. He had a frame shop there.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman, it's a slippery slope in terms of these, you know, excess 900 above the square footage, and yet, they're not proposing to start from scratch. And so when, my opinion is, when folks come to us with plans, as we've seen repeatedly, 1,300, 1,400, 1,500, 1,600 square feet for ADUs, where the, you know, bylaw was put in place for 900 max, so, you know, I don't think there's any way to, that we can ask her, you know, the applicant to shrink it, you know, it just doesn't, it's, what do you do with a dead space, of course, so. In light of that, pre-existing, to get it permitted, to get a body or housing, you know, that we so badly need in this town at this point for, you know, I'm in favor of this personally.
Larry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to talk to the other, appeal was the framework. Just wanted you to know that.
Okay, does anyone want to make findings? Aaron?
I will take a stab at it, sure. Let me get to the, okay, so, appeal number 2024-015, Swapna Singh has applied for special permit pursuant to section 240-47.2C, for accessory dwelling unit, ADUs. The applicant proposes to use the existing 1,300-square-feet accessory structure already in place, attached by a roof to the principal dwelling and formerly an exercise room as an ADU, which exceeds the allowable size by 400 square feet. There is no new development proposed. And again, I want to reiterate, there is no new development proposed. The subject property is located at 144 Meadow Lane, West Barnstable, Mass., as is shown on the Assessor's Map, 133, as parcel 026. It is located in the Residence FRF Zoning District. So to make these findings, of course, we need to look at a couple different criteria. The first one being the applicant, application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section 240-47.2C4 allows a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit that exceeds the allowable size. Again, as we discussed, pre-existing space, looking to have permitted, which we appreciate, of course, doesn't make any sense to, to not, in my opinion, in the board's opinion, approve that. Site plan review is not required, in this case, for a single-family residential dwellings, and after evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. And again, we just nobody, we have no public comment on it. I'm sure the abutters were notified and so forth, and so, all that being said, I make a motion to approve appeal number 2024-015.
Thank you, Aaron. All those, do we have a second? Larry, seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and conditions?
Yep, so just real quick, let me just get back to where we were here. There are conditions attached to your approval. They are labeled on the agenda, 1 through 6. Have you had a chance to review those?
Yes.
And you're okay with them as presented?
Yes.
Okay. We don't need to read those into the record, no? Great. So make a motion to approve the, what are they called?
Conditions.
Conditions as presented.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you have approval of that part. You can go to 1,300 square feet. We can't give you everything, but you gotta deal with the rest with the building commissioner.
All right, thank you so much, member of the board and the chairman.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for your patience, sitting through our other, other hearings. All right, that is, let's see, let's see, we had a notification of transmittal of application for a definitive subdivision at 307 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass., subdivision number 828, is being heard by the planning board on May 13. I don't think there's any matters recently anticipated. Upcoming hearings, May 22, June 12, and June 26. Are we doing training at the 12th, June 12th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. At 5 o'clock again?
Yes. Would you like it?
Yeah.
I didn't know that was, because I would have been here.
And is that the 12th?
Yeah, June 12.
All right, I very possibly will not be here for that particular meeting, but just maybe meant to pencil it in.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, any second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.